It's March 28, 2023. Wish happy birthday to my husband if he's out there. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for the invocation. Dear Lord, thank you for all who serve the Kettering community. Give us enthusiasm for our work and wisdom to make the right decisions. May we remain humble and grateful for the opportunity to lead. Guide this council so that we may continue to serve our citizens with the integrity and purpose, always remembering to be worthy of the responsibilities entrusted in us by our residents. Amen. Thank you. Mr. Duke and Mrs. Hall both have excused absences this evening. I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Soprone. Mike, thanks for your assistance back there. Thank you. Okay. Move on for approval of the minutes. A call on Mrs. Fisher for a motion to approve the minutes from the March 14 council meeting and workshop.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both of those minutes, and I do find them in order, and I move for their approval.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipass.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Lehner.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We do have an appointment to make tonight. That's for the Board of Community Relations. Leah White, her term is ending, it says here, May 31, '23. That can't be right. Is it right? Okay, two months?
It is correct. She's...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anyone opposed? No. No one opposed. Okay. We have a proclamation tonight for the Fair Housing Month, and I'm going to ask Lisa Duval to please read the proclamation.
Whereas April 11, 2023 marks the 55th anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates "a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, national origin, sex, familial status or disability, and encourages equal housing opportunities and residential integration for all citizens; and whereas the month of April is traditionally designated as Fair Housing Month by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and locally this year's theme to commemorate Fair Housing Month is 'Fair Housing: A Tool for Understanding and Addressing Poverty in Order to Highlight the Fair Housing Law Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended.'" Whereas the principle of fair housing is not only law but a basic human necessity and an inalienable right inscribed in the Constitution of the State of Ohio as adopted in 1851, and whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center is engaged in passionately pursuing its mission to eliminate housing discrimination in the Miami Valley, the State of Ohio, and nationally, and whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center has been recognized regionally, statewide, and nationally, its creativity and effectiveness in pursuing its mission to eliminate housing discrimination and ensure equal housing opportunities for all people in our region, the State of Ohio, and nationally, and whereas the Miami Valley Fair Housing Center and the Dayton Realtors are committed to continuing to address housing discrimination in our country. Now therefore Peggy Lehner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, do hereby proclaim April 2023 to be Fair Housing Month in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urge all citizens to understand and exercise their right to equal housing opportunities.
Okay. Thank you very much. Receiving this proclamation tonight is John Zimmerman, Vice President of Miami Valley Fair Housing Center. And if you want to come up here to the podium, I will hand you this. And thank you very much. And you have a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. First, I want to thank everyone in the City of Kettering for being one of our key partners in eliminating housing discrimination in Kettering and across the region. I also want everyone here to know, and all of the viewers, that our services are at no cost, and people can call us at 937-223-6035, five days a week, and they could ask, you know, tell us their story, and then we can tell them their options. Our website is M is in Miami and V is in Valley, fairhousing.com. So I want to make a few remarks. I've given you all this, okay? And it's our graphics this year for our Fair Housing event. And the theme is post-COVID. I think it's "Fair Housing: A Tool for Understanding and Addressing Poverty." It's important because HUD mandates that to ensure the Fair Housing Act's promise that all people have a chance at the American dream, we need to do whatever we can to eliminate poverty. And so there's one other thing, though, that I wanted to point out. Today, when we got into work, we added this small emoji on the bottom of our thing, and it's a square with a hashtag in it. And we are joining along with the National Football League and Robert Kraft, who owns the Patriots, and he has just put up $25 million for a marketing campaign. And it's, the marketing campaign and this emoji stand for "Stand Up to Jewish Hate." When you put this emoji on a screen like this, it is 2.5% of the screen. That equals the population of Jewish people in the United States. And even though they are 2.5% of the population, they account for 55% of all religious hate crimes. And so that with these statistics coming out from the FBI, obviously, people need to follow Mr. Kraft's advice and stand up against Jewish hate. We partly have also added this because our Fair Housing celebration is on April 5, which is the Feast of the Passover. And so we felt that really appropriate to add that, you know, and to celebrate Jewish culture along with celebrating the passage of the Fair Housing Act. Thanks again very much for having me tonight and for issuing the proclamation. Are there any questions?
I have a comment. One thing that you just demonstrated to us that you, the Fair Housing Center does all the time is you work very closely in educating us. He works, he participates in multiple educational events with the Board of Community Relations, specifically the landlord-tenant rights workshops and everything. You've been wonderful for our community, and thank you. And thank you to the Miami Valley Fair Housing. You guys do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'll add to those kudos. You're an important part of the community. Anyone else have any comments? All right. See you then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Okay. We do have a public hearing tonight. The hearing is on proposed amendments to the zoning code. The Planning Commission has recommended that the proposed amendments be approved, and the Planning Commission's certification packet is made part of the record here tonight. We will start off by Ryan Holmsey is going to give a presentation for the staff. Welcome, Ryan, and take it away.
All right. Good evening, Council. I think if you could press the number. Should go to the correct presentation.
There you go.
There we go.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the introduction. This zoning, this amendment affects nine different chapters of the zoning code. It went for a public hearing with the Planning Commission earlier this month, and I'll get into the recommendation at the end of the presentation, but before I do that, I'll go through each individual proposed amendment. Most of the changes are fairly minor, but a lot of them are based on discussions after going through another year of reviewing projects and talking to applicants and approving projects and not approving projects. A lot of these changes are based on kind of just looking at the code and modernizing it a little bit to make it easier to get plans approved, particularly for sites that have already been developed under old zoning codes and are having a harder time being redeveloped with the codes we have today. So the first chapter that's being, and there's a couple other changes intermixed within that, the first chapter being affected is just the enactment and interpretation chapter, Chapter 1131. And the only change being proposed for that chapter is it creates a reference to the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, and references the charter which created those two bodies. And the purpose of that change is really to just give us, it also creates a standard for both of those bodies creating their own bylaws. Both, both groups have their own bylaws today, but they're fairly dated, and we'd like to update those later this year if we can, or if we have time. The next chapter is Chapter 1135. That just deals with our, the establishment of our zoning districts and the establishment of the use list within each zoning district. The changes proposed would remove self-in-many storage uses from the B business zoning district, and it would remove self-in-many storage uses, automobile washing uses, fueling, vehicle fueling and recharging uses, auto sales and service uses, and auto rental and service uses from the business park zoning district. And our business park is our industrial zoning district if you look at our code. Chapter 1137 establishes specific uses for a number of uses in the code. What the, what the proposed changes would do is it would create requirements relating to architecture and common areas for multi-unit residential developments within non-residential zoning districts. It would add more options for buffer yard fences and walls between residential and certain non-residential uses, because today our code requires block walls between a lot of different uses and residential uses, and that's a standard that was created many, many years ago. And there's new technology today that could meet the same intent of that original standard without it being overly expensive. It removes references to self-in-many storage uses. It creates a setback requirement for outdoor production when such uses adjoin residential uses. And it removes the specific setback requirement between kennel uses and residential uses because when that setback was originally created, the intention was to deal with noise, potential noise issues, but there's also several standards that already exist and will be retained within the kennel section that requires that all those uses be done indoors and that the buildings where they're done be soundproofed. And those standards will be retained. Chapter 1139 deals with accessory structures and uses. One minor change, this is really just clarifying, probably an error when the code was first created. It allows decks and patios within front yards of non-residential uses such as restaurants. It updates our pool cover requirements to be more consistent with the best practices today. It relaws ground-mounted solar energy systems as accessory uses within residential districts. These were permitted at one time several years ago, and at one point they were removed, and you're only allowed to put them on rooftops today. The problem with that is it eliminates or significantly reduces the odds that people without south-facing roofs will install solar systems on their property. This relaws ground-mounted systems with some standards. And it removes, we have an undefined accessory use for guest housing, which it's undefined. There's no standards for it, and it just removes that from the accessory use list within residential districts. Chapter 1143 deals with our general site and environmental standards such as lighting, driveways, and access and things of that nature. The three changes proposed to this chapter would allow for a greater reduction in required buffer yard plantings when cross-access easements are provided between adjoining properties. Today, if you provide cross-access between two neighboring properties, you're allowed to have a 20% reduction in the buffer yard plantings, but that's such a low reduction that it probably wouldn't encourage a lot of people to do that. So we want to increase that percentage to go up to 100% reduction if you do certain things like closed curb cuts and share access. It requires that light fixtures be installed only on light poles, bollards, or buildings. And it updates the light trespass standards to be more flexible when you have light trespass between non-residential uses and commercial areas. Chapter 1145 is our parking and loading chapter. This proposed amendment would eliminate the setback in screening requirements for side-yard parking spaces for residential properties consisting of two or fewer dwelling units. And this really just reestablishes the standard that we had before 2015, where we didn't have a setback or a screening requirement if you wanted to add a parking pad next to your house. Number two, it adds flexibility to the parking lot curbing requirements for existing lots that are being redeveloped. And it also adds flexibility to the minimum parking space and drive aisle sizes for existing parking lots when a property is being redeveloped, and we discussed that earlier today. A lot of the changes in Chapter 1147, which deals with landscaping and buffer yards, are very minor. It really just gives staff the ability to be a little more flexible when we're reviewing landscaping plans. We allow, this amendment would allow streetscape trees to be either canopy trees or Group A trees. Canopy trees are just really big deciduous trees. Group A trees are slightly smaller. The code today requires you to start with canopy trees unless there are overhead power lines that are 35 feet or lower. The problem with that standard is there are not a lot of trees that you can grow here that are considered canopy trees, so it forces people to use a lot of the same variety of trees, which causes monocultures, which if we ever get another Emerald Ash borer that rips through the area. This is main, these two standards, including with the parking lots, are really meant to allow a wider variety of tree species to be planted within these areas. Going along with the changes to Chapter 1137, we're modifying some of the buffer yard fence requirements to be a little more flexible. Number four, it updates the requirements for masonry and retaining walls to be consistent with historic practices in terms of how we've reviewed those permit applications in the past. And finally, it updates the substitution of standards clause to increase the amount of flexibility afforded to existing developed sites that are being redeveloped. And that basically just gives us the ability to be a little more flexible to allow people to do alternative plans that meet the intent of the code but might not meet the strict letter of the law if you're redeveloping a site that has already been developed in the past. The last chapter, Chapter 1155, and this really, the first change really just clarifies, there's a section of the code that if you do certain changes to your site, it triggers a requirement that you have to fully comply with the zoning code, and there's some confusing language today when it deals with if you're making changes to the improved surface area. This change really just clarifies what that language means. And the second change really ties together a lot of the other changes we've already proposed, and it creates an official set of standards that staff has to review if you have an existing non-conforming site, what you have to meet in order to allow staff to approve modifications to certain standards in the code such as landscaping and parking requirements. And that's what that last change does. And finally, to the definitions section, these are all really just housekeeping changes. There are certain things that are referenced throughout the code but don't have definitions, including arcade, arch, attached, awning, canopy, improved surface, and marquee. This amendment would create definitions for those items. And then it would modify definitions to self-in-many storage uses, to warehousing and distribution, and weapon sales. And the amendment proposed to weapon sales is really just to bring the code into line with some changes to state law that were passed, I believe, within the last year. And the Planning Commission reviewed this item at a public hearing at their March 6 meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended approval with four amendments. And all of those amendments were reflected in the Red Line document that went out with the packet. The first change is to Section 1137.O2.2, and that's the design standards for multi-unit residential developments within non-residential districts. They proposed to remove the proposed change relating to parking lot design, also relating to that same chapter when it comes to our standards for automobile fueling and recharging uses. We wanted to increase the maximum canopy height from 16 feet to 18 feet, which is in line with the existing fueling stations we have in the city, based on a survey. To Section 1145.13.1, there were some changes proposed to the parking of recreational vehicles and trailers. They wanted to do a little bit more of a, more research on that before proposing any changes, so they proposed to remove those changes entirely. And then finally to Section 1155.O9.B., which is the new section about modifications to standards for non-conforming sites. There was a term used in that section that is not defined, and we wanted to remove that to avoid any confusion, and that, that's what that change would do. And again, all of those changes were included in the Red Line document that went out, so that's the Planning Commission recommendation. And I would be happy to answer any questions. I know that was a lot, but if there's any questions, let me know.
Yeah, I have a question. One of your earlier slides about the business park?
Yeah.
Could we go back to that?
About the use list?
Yes.
Okay. Right here.
Go back.
One more?
The fueling, recharging. So just humor me. So what we're saying is we could not have a EV recharging station put forth by a business in the park?
Oh, no. If you're putting a, you're talking like a plug-in spot in your parking lot?
Correct.
No, that would, that would just be an accessory use to a parking lot. This is really just if you have like a gas station.
Commercial.
Like it's a principal use of a single property. But no, if you want to add a EV space out front, you could do that at your house, in your garage, and it wouldn't be considered a recharging station because it's accessory to the parking space.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
I just have a question or a comment. I don't know how many times during your presentation, Ryan, you said these changes allow staff to be more flexible. So flexible was kind of the word of the night with your presentation. What does these changes do for residents and businesses? I mean, how are they going to look at the flexibility here? I'm looking for the word, this is a positive change for our residents and businesses too, to make things a little more flexible when it comes to change, right?
Yeah. A lot of the changes to like the business chap, business sections is really meant to deal with properties that were developed under old zoning codes. It's always the main challenge of zoning. You develop properties in the 50s, 60s, 70s, and then overlay new codes, and it's hard to redevelop them. So a lot of the changes to the business sections would make it easier, like for landscaping. If you, if you literally can't fit the buffers that you're required to put, particularly between like uses, it gives staff the ability to look at your site plan, make sure that you meet the code, meet the standard to the extent possible, but then it gives us the ability to say you've done as much as you can so you can proceed with your project. It's not going to allow every project to be approved because some just can't fit.
Right.
But from a business perspective, I think it's, the intent is to be more flexible with those existing sites that developed a long time ago. There's not, when it comes to the residential side, there's not a lot of changes that deal with residential, like, single-family lots today. Probably the main change would, it would make it, it'd give more properties the ability to fit a parking pad next to their house if they want to widen their driveway and have a space next to their house. It would make it a little bit easier for them to do that because it gets rid of that setback, that three-foot setback and the six-foot hedge that you're required to put in today, because that wasn't a requirement until 2015, and we just wanted to go back to the old standard. But when it comes to residents, there's not going to be, you won't notice a lot of changes with these changes tonight, but we're certainly open to discuss if there's any issues that come up in those sections of the code in the future.
Good deal. Thanks for doing this.
I do have one, and it's a lot of talk about trees and the trees that we're allowed to plant and not allowed to plant, et cetera, are canopies. There was recently a story in the paper about Bradford pears being considered illegal. Is there anything in the zoning code that requires you remove or?
There's nothing in the zoning code that requires you to remove them. I think the, I think it was calorie, like a calorie pears officially became invasive, I think, this year. There's nothing in the zoning code right now that requires you to remove them. I think if, in the future, if we want to, if you're coming in for redevelopment and you have a bunch of calorie pears around your property, that could probably be a pretty easy section to add in the future to say, remove trees that are deemed invasive by the Ohio Department of Agriculture, but there's nothing in the code right now that would require you to do that. We might encourage someone to do that, and those trees aren't good, I mean, they're just not good trees. They have a...
They're so pretty right now.
They look, they look cool for a couple years. They grow really fast, but they have all kinds of problems that come with them.
Yeah.
But if we wanted to add something in the next set of amendments, I don't think that'd be a hard thing to add for redeveloping sites.
Okay. Thank you. See, no further questions. I am now going to open the meeting for public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak about this particular piece of legislation? And it's now time for public comments, which shall be limited to five minutes per person. Each person may speak only once. Please do not repeat material that has already been covered. Before you begin, please state your name and address. Anyone in favor of the amendments? Regarding the public, the public hearing tonight, not general legislation. Yes, you are. Come on down to the podium. Please give your name and address.
My name's Rick Schweder. I own Four Point Car Wash, 2074 Boulevard. Not sure if we're at the right place. Basically here for clarification. I'm like this close to retiring. This is John Clark. We're in negotiation for him to buy my wash, and I just learned yesterday about the zoning changes. Perhaps I need to speak to the previous speaker. Section 1135, the zoning change, I'm not sure. I guess I need clarification of how it will affect Four Point Car Wash down the road. Everything from, like John had heard, that even like if a tornado came along and blew the roof off, they would not be able to fix it. Is there some type of grandfather rule in this? I think it's Section 1135 of the changes. And I'm not sure of the district that my location is on. Corner of Woodman Drive and Ford Boulevard.
Okay. Those are very specific questions you have. It might be best for you to meet Mr. Holmes.
I guess I just heard about it yesterday.
Yeah, sure.
And I didn't know if this place would be packed with people with the same questions about...
We didn't know that would happen either.
The zoning changes.
Ryan, did you want to address this in general terms, or you want to just meet with the gentleman? Okay.
Great example. That was a perfect example, sir. That was awesome. That was an awesome question.
Just nervous about?
No. It's a good question. It's a perfect question.
You want to sell that place?
No, it's...
We've been here 17 years.
No, that's a perfect question.
Sure, you're not alone, so let's see what we have here.
Perfect question.
It is a perfect question.
Yeah, that property is actually, that is, that property is zoned business park. It's zoned BP at the corner of Woodman and Ford.
Can you hear him all right? I know the microphone needs an extension, right?
Can you, can everyone hear me?
You bet. Both ways.
That property is zoned BP. Did we talk on the phone?
We did.
Okay. That property is zoned BP, so if this amendment goes into effect without an amendment to that, it doesn't, it would become grandfathered in. It would not, you'd continue to operate it as it is. You could make repairs to it. You wouldn't have to like suddenly demolish it, but if it were to catch on fire, burn down, and significant repair, I'd have to get the actual percentages from the nonconformity chapter of the code. There's a certain point where you couldn't like tear it down and rebuild it as a car wash, but you could keep operating it as one and maintain it as one as it has been developed today. But to get more, into more specifics, I'd have to do some more research in the code, which I'm more than happy to do. I talked to Mr. Clark.
Great, great question.
Right. Clark. I did talk to Mr. Clark, I think Friday afternoon, or Friday afternoon, I believe, and I'd be more than happy to get his number and talk to him later, and I can bring some more information back to Council.
So basically, in a situation like that, we're talking about a grandfathering it in?
It would be grandfathered in. It wouldn't suddenly, if this amendment passes, it wouldn't suddenly be that's illegal, turn it, shut it down.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to expand it, you wouldn't be able to do that. You could repair it and maintain it, but if you wanted to do a substantial renovation, you'd probably run into some trouble.
So back to his example, the roof comes off. He'd be able to fix the roof and get it back operational, but what you said to make sure, I mean, this is, this, that was a very good question, sir. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. If it somehow burned all the way down to the ground or the tornado took it all the way back out, the new owner might not be able to rebuild that car wash.
They would not. If it tornadoed up to the ground.
And that's, that's, that's the question. That was a perfect question.
Do you have a follow-up? Yeah.
Your question.
That was my concern is, sorry, I'm John Clark. I live in Beaver Creek. Like to purchase that from Rick.
We have your address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 692 Sudan Drive, Beaver Creek.
Okay, thank you.
I have lived in Greenmont, so I do have some roots here in Kettering. That was my concern is, see, I take out a loan.
my concern, is, see, I take out a loan, and they give me so much to repair it, but I can't, I'd be stuck with the bill I can't foot because I can't repair the car wash. So, I just want to make sure these are all done before, you know, I make my final decision because this is, I'm on the cusp of making the final decision.
Sure.
I'm just a little guy trying to follow in Rick's footsteps, so.
Well, hopefully after you speak with Ryan, you'll feel comfortable because we'd love to have you stay right here. So, don't go anywhere.
Alright.
All right. Okay. Was there anyone else who wished to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone who wishes to speak who's opposed to the amendments? Okay. And we've already gotten city staff's response to that, so at this point, I'm going to close the public meeting. The hearing is now closed. City council will take the matter under advisement. Legislation amending the zoning code will be considered at a future city council meeting. Thank you.
So, that means that it's still not decided yet. So, if you're unsure what that really means to you two, so that's why it's very important for you to sit down with Ryan and make sure you're well-educated on every scenario you can kind of come up with.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, anyone wishing to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda, other than this public hearing, may do so at this time. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Okay, Mr. Sterling?
My name is Sterling Abernathy. I have comments on two of the agenda items tonight. The first one is agenda item 13. It's an emergency ordinance modifying the city's building codes. When was the council meeting where you discussed this change? Once again, councils declaring an emergency which bypasses normal public review for new ordinances. So, what is this emergency of the building code? The second item, agenda item interested in, is number 11. It's a resolution that establishes something called a community reinvestment area. Two neighborhoods, Oak Park and Aragon, which is 900 homes, will be part of this community reinvestment area, also called a CRA. The CRA runs through Miami Valley Research Park as far as County Line Road, right across from the Bergamo Center. I don't know whether this community reinvestment area is a good thing or a bad thing. What I do know is that the city has officially designated 900 homes in Kettering, the Aragon and Oak Park neighborhoods, as neighborhoods which discourage repair of existing homes and new construction. Before the city labels neighborhoods of 900 homes in Kettering as blighted and deteriorating, why not first discuss it with the residents? Answer questions about the impact of this designation that it has on property value and marketability of their home. Wouldn't you want this done for you before the city assigns a negative label to your neighborhood? Also, the resolution provides property tax breaks to a commercial real estate developer to spend a minimum of $30 million building new apartments and multifamily housing in the area. Before you approve your deal of tax breaks for the developer, why not share the proposal with the public, including the Oak Park and Aragon residents who might be affected, as well as Bergamo? Again, if the city planned a deal for tax breaks to a commercial developer to build apartments in your neighborhood, wouldn't you expect to be informed about this before council took a vote? Having open council meetings about the CRA is the law. Look at section 15 in your resolution. Section 15 states, "The council has determined, quote, 'All deliberations of the city council and of its committees which resulted in formal action were taken in meetings open to the public,' end quote. Note the term 'all deliberations.' When were these open public meetings about the CRA held? Your section 15 says they were. Is there nothing about this CRA that could have been discussed in open meetings? For example, when was the public meeting that you discussed the city's housing survey report of Aragon and Oak Park, complete with photos of so-called problem homes?" Back to section 15 of your resolution. Ohio law, as recited in section 15, requires you to provide open public access to your meetings about the community reinvestment area. A CRA cannot be created using only undeveloped land. To use a CRA to give tax breaks to build apartments on undeveloped land, like the Miami Valley Research Park, the CRA must be expanded to include older homes in what the city calls problem neighborhoods. Is a secret deal with a developer to build new apartments in the Miami Valley Research Park worth stigmatizing 900 homes in Kettering? Before the CRA is approved, you should proactively inform the public and the 900 property owners, give them an opportunity to ask questions, and listen to their feedback. Until that happens, don't approve this CRA resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Greason, do you care to respond at this point?
At this juncture, we'll present the item when it's up on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to address council at this point on legislation that's on the agenda for tonight? Okay, seeing none. We will now move on to ordinances in second reading. Mrs. Fisher, would you like to introduce the first?
Yes, ma'am. I do have an ordinance to levy special assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related aperturances. That, that word is just terrible for us. I'd just say it. For the Smithville Road resurfacing Wilmington Pike to North Corporate Project, city project number 02-134F. It is requested by the engineering department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. This is our normal process for assessing for curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches with a project. In this case, the Smithville Road resurfacing from Wilmington Pike to the North Corp. project. I would just note that a list of the final assessments is on file with the clerk of council. The public notice was advertised for 21 days. The 14-day objection period ended on February 21st, and no objections were received. The period to pay cash will be until August 25th, 2023. All assessments not paid in cash shall be certified to the county auditor to be collected according to the city's assessment policy and interest schedule beginning in January 2024. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes. We'll now move on to resolutions. The first one is going to be read by Mr. Clepass.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution this evening authorizing the city manager to contract with AT&amp;T for voice-over IP phone service. The estimated cost is $58,400. That is the amount budgeted. It's requested by Administrative Systems Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. As Mr. Clepass articulated, this is for our voice-over IP phone service that serves the city services in all of our buildings. We're proposing to continue our contractual relationship with AT&amp;T for up to a three-year period, and this will address all of our primary phone service, including non-emergency calls to the dispatch center.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase high-performance disk storage arrays from Buckeye Business Solutions. Estimated cost is $75,000. That is the amount budgeted and is requested by the Administrative Systems Department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. Members of council, we use disk storage arrays or SANS as a core component of our information system division's disaster recovery and business continuity plan. Essentially, data is stored at different locations, and it's replicated multiple times per day. This is, this technology gives us the ability to recover from any failures more rapidly and with less data loss than what would be your traditional backup systems. The current SANS are approaching the end of the life, and we have budgeted to replace them. Approving this will allow us to move forward, and it's approximately $75,000.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a Bureau of Justice Assistance Fiscal Year 2023 Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program grant from the United States Department of Justice. This is being requested by the police department. I move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. Members of council, this will authorize us to pursue grant funding for up to $2,000 per body-worn camera, as well as a second category of grant for technology that better enables sharing of video between prosecutors, the law department, and the police department. We're requesting approval for us to seek these grants.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, seeing none, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a donation from Doorwood Optimist Club and a grant from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources Division of Wildlife. The estimated cost is $1,000 with no available funds, and it is requested by the police department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Your honor, as your new city manager, I'm going to have to learn what the Kettering Middle School Fishing Club catches in our ponds with the assistance of our police department. As part of this program where we're engaging youth in positive activities, the Kettering Middle School Fishing Club gives fishing opportunities to students at Kettering Middle School. The donation is welcomed, and we're thankful for it. We urge you to accept it, and the grant will also provide, combined together, they'll provide the funding needed to purchase supplies for the program.
Any questions? Anyone want to tell them how big the fish are in the pond? Not very big.
It's mostly crappies and mostly bluegills. About six inches this year, they'll be, maybe at the most.
Very good. So, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution to amend resolution number 10840-23 regarding the removal and replacement of concrete throughout Lincoln Park and Civic Commons and allow an additional expenditure of funds. The estimated cost is $10,760. That is the amount budgeted, requested by Parks, Recreation, and Culture Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. We have, we budgeted for replacement of concrete in various areas throughout Lincoln Park and Civic Commons. We received quotations for that project. We originally budgeted $30,000, and the quotes resulted in a project cost of $40,760. So, we're requesting additional funding in the line for the Lincoln Park and Civic Commons project. However, we will offset that additional cost, making it essentially budget-neutral by underspending in another line that's related to, it's called miscellaneous concrete repair program in other, other parts of the city. So, we appreciate your consideration of this and be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for architectural design services. Estimated cost is $50,000 and is already included in budgets for multiple projects and is requested by the public service department. Move for approval.
Second. Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. The city has various capital improvement projects that occasionally require the use of an architect for pulling permits, for doing design, and also code review. The architectural firm will be selected through a competitive proposal process in 2023. The initial contract would be through the remainder of this year, and then we would reserve the right to continue using their services for two additional 12-month periods, basically at the same price and terms and conditions. This is useful for particularly our smaller projects that the city completes, and we're recommending approval. Be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to contract with Citizen Solutions Doing Business as Public Input to provide a public engagement and communications platform. The estimated cost is $30,000. That is the amount budgeted. This is being requested by the city manager's office. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor. We use a num, this, this tool will allow us to eliminate several single-function subscriptions we use, that we use for things like email notifications, email lists, surveys for the community, the social media efforts. This tool allows us to more closely engage with residents and business over, over time and use one software application where we have previously been using three. Additionally, it allows a multitude of users across our organization, essentially putting our departments on using one public engagement platform. This is budget-neutral in a sense. The, no longer using the several other software subscriptions that we're currently using will allow us to pay for the cost of using this new solution called Public Input. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
I have a question. Using this system, would that enable us to use email as opposed to snail mail for different types of communications and saving a lot of money?
I, I think we do that a lot, so we have a number of e-newsletters, for instance, and e-notifications for everything from parks programming to our, our newsletter that the city manager's office produces, that the parks department uses, that the FRAES does, and those are all managed through a, a software that is only for managing email. There's also a software that you can use online for conducting surveys, so sometimes if you have a website survey and there's a backend software that does that, this will combine all of those. But the answer to your question is yes. Where e-newsletters are appropriate, and snail mail is no longer appropriate. We would always prefer digital, but my experience is you never fully get away from mail because there are many residents that that's still how they get their-
Their information.
Their communications from the city, and it's valuable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Clepass?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lainer?
Yes.
Your honor, I have a resolution, creating and appointing members of the Strategic Plan Steering Committee. It is requ- Steering Committee. It is requested by the most appreciative city council to those residents that have stepped up, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Your Honor, I don't have a lot to add other than to say we, we had over 80 applicants for our Strategic Planning Committee and 30 that are being proposed here this evening. And we, we just so greatly appreciate that they're going to be dedicating their time to this community, to plan for its future. And we're thankful for those who applied and, and while if they're not, if those who weren't selected, we're going to try to find some way to engage them in the process. But we're pleased with this group. We believe it represents a cross-section of this community, people who are dedicated to making it a better place.
Thank you. This is the first call we have made for volunteers to be part of the strategic plan, and we've been overwhelmed by response and look forward to that continued interest by our citizens in this important project. So, any questions, comments? Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Clepass.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution implementing Sections 3735.65 through 3735.70 of the Ohio Revised Code, establishing and describing the boundaries of the Aragon Oak Park Community Reinvestment Area in the city of Kettering, designating a housing officer to administer the program and a tax incentive review council, and creating a Community Reinvestment Housing Council. It's requested by the Economic Development Manager. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes. I am going to turn it over to Ms. Shrimp, and she is going to overview what we're doing here. And I may add some comments and certainly invite your questions. We'd be glad to address any of the concerns that have been raised.
Yeah. Thank you for the opportunity tonight, not only to explain this legislation, but also to respond to the comments that were made earlier about CRAs. I want to reiterate, CRA, Community Reinvestment Area, is an economic development tool. It is not meant to hurt a neighborhood, of course. That is never our intent here in the city of Kettering. And so I'm a little surprised by the comments tonight. What I want to explain, they are an economic development tool for communities that provide real property tax exemptions for property owners to renovate or remodel and improve their properties. That is what we're trying to get at here in that neighborhood. The housing study referenced does not designate an entire neighborhood as blighted. Instead, under the Ohio Revised Code, we have to submit a housing study to the Ohio Department of Development, showing them that there are examples of disinvestment in the neighborhood that we designate for the CRA. And that's what the housing study did. You know, unfortunately, there are examples in, in the boundaries of the CRA that show certain property owners aren't reinvesting in their property. In fact, what do CRAs do rather than lower property values? They actually increase property values because they encourage investment. Therefore, individual property owners may then take this tool as an opportunity to invest in their property, add something, you know, add, add a garage on, add a porch on, do something to make their property look nicer, to remodel, ren, you know, renovate their property, to improve it. Thus, at that point, it, you know, everybody knows that when your neighbor's property looks better, you know, it elevates your property values too. Your neighbor's properties have an impact on your values. So, we're trying to kind of rise up the entire, you know, property value in that neighborhood and encourage our residents to improve their properties. And when they do so, they get a tax incentive, which is laid out in the legislation, that they can take advantage of based on the value of their improvement. Now, we will be letting neighbors know. We'll be having a meeting, sending out letters, and in fact, as we discussed earlier in workshop, we'll also be letting them know of other economic development tools that they can take advantage of, not just this CRA. So, now I'm going to get sort of into the nitty-gritty of the legislation. It does establish the boundaries. It's called the Aragon Oak Park Community Reinvestment Area. It designates a housing officer who will administer the program and a tax incentive review council. This will provide that our city can grant certain exemptions with real property taxation for new residential housing, construction or remodeling investments within the area that has been designated in the language. The city desires to pursue all reasonable incentive measures to assist and encourage residential housing development and construction and remodeling within this, when the, within this CRA area. I think that's all I have, but I, I expect you might have some questions. So, I'm sure the city manager and I are happy to answer those.
Thank you. Mr. Greason, do you want to add something at this point, or?
No, I, the only thing I would add is just it's a commonly-used tool across Ohio cities to foster redevelopment. And certainly, I recommend that, that it's approval, and I concur with Ms. Shrimp's description of it. And essentially, what we're trying to do here is create a tool for our city government to help residents in that, in those two neighborhoods improve their properties. In addition to that, we're also creating a tool where we can incentivize high-quality market-rate apartments in the Miami Valley Research Park at Research and County Line. I will note that an abatement extended to that property will require a separate and additional agreement where the terms and details of it will, you know, be presented in a pub, in, in public forum in the future.
Great, thank you. Do we have any council members who wish to comment at this point? Mr. Scott.
I've just got a quick comment. I want to thank Ms. Shrimp for, in plain English, explaining for those residents of that neighborhood that that is a good thing and is not devaluing their neighborhood. So, I appreciate that, and I think our citizens would appreciate that.
Thank you.
I would like to also thank you, Amy. I appreciate your explanation. That was perfect. I am a former resident of the Oak Park neighborhood, and I know lots of people in the Aragon neighborhood, and there is not one person in that neighborhood who doesn't want to live in a house that has a good roof and new windows and a driveway that's not all torn up. These are good things. This is a good move for those neighbor, neighborhoods. And I'm very excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to also comment that, you know, while, while we certainly encourage our citizens to come to council and bring issues and concerns with us, we would very much appreciate it if you'd stay around for the answer. It just makes everything function a little bit better when we have dialogue and, and not monologues from here. Okay. With that, we'll.
Can I?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I follow up to what the mayor just said. I think it's a key to get out in front of this thing. And what you mentioned, Mrs. Shrimp, was the fact that we are going to be communicating to these 900 households, you know, they, to give them the real story about what, what the opportunity is. So, thanks for mentioning that, and look forward to getting out front on that, too. Thanks.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Mr. Clepass.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Kettering, state of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023. Estimated cost is $1,000 and is requested by the Finance Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason.
Yes, earlier I talked about the wonderful Kettering Middle School program and the Kettering Police Department's Fishing Club. This makes the additional appropriation that allows the grant acceptance and the donation acceptance that you approved earlier to become possible. I look forward to seeing if the middle schoolers catch something bigger than Councilmember Clepass described.
Nope. That was being generous.
I've worked that fishing derby many years, and I pulled those bluegills off the hook. And the biggest one I ever saw was five inches. And that's why I say now, they may have grown to sticks, right?
Okay, any questions? Call the roll.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Clepass.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
Okay, we will now move to ordinances in first reading. And I think we're starting with Ms. DuVall.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance to amend Section 1301.01 of the codified ordinances regarding building codes and to declare an emergency. This is being requested by the Planning and Development Department.
Move for approval. Move for approval.
Oh, I'm sorry, move for approval. I apologize.
Yes, Your Honor, I, I understand in Kettering's practices, emergency ordinances are rare, and we certainly are always willing to describe the necessity of, of those emergencies. And I would say for the public, emergencies aren't necessarily things like natural disasters. In many cases, they're, they're things that need to happen rapidly to ensure the orderly implementation of, and, and administration of government services, which are also important to their daily lives. We're going to take a brief minute to explain what we're doing here. I'm going to call on Mr. Hamer and possibly Mr. Robelard to assist. Mr. Hamer?
Thank you, Mr. Greason. Your Honor, members of council, this ordinance amends the city adopted building codes by making a section that specifically lays out the appeal that a person could take from an order issued by Kettering's chief building official under the codes. The reason that's necessary is, in the United States, you know, we have the rule of law, and part of that is you get the right to appeal an order if you don't believe it's correct. So, right now, the code isn't very specific about that. Part of the reason is that the state of Ohio, the Ohio General Assembly requires, yes, requires local governments to adopt and enforce the state code. And unfortunately, the state code isn't very clear about this. So, the body which hears appeals under the state code is a certified city or county building commissioner, appeal board, excuse me. Kettering does not have its own, and so it has to contract with another agency to hear these appeals, particularly for appeals of the residential building code. So, Kettering's body that it had been using, for whatever reason, now cannot hear appeals. So, people that receive an order from the Kettering building official now have nowhere to appeal. So, we're making it clear now that the appellate body that would hear these appeals would be any body that's certified by the state but that the city contracts with, so that if this ever happens again, we don't have to go through this. The city can just change up the body with a new contract. And that's the reason why, as Mr. Greason alluded to, this is an emergency, because we have to have these means of appeal as a city that has its own building department. So, if I didn't explain it well enough, please allow me to try again or ask your questions so I can clarify.
Good job.
Yeah, I would just add for, for benefit that these appeals are rare, and so there's not, there's no reason we would stand up our own appeals board. We, it's more efficient to rely on another governmental entity who may have more frequent ones and is more prepared to handle them. And so, this gives us the flexibility to choose that one, which we are, we find ourselves in the need to do so right now.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I, I just have a comment that, for the record, that prior to this meeting and this explanation, the manager did notify council of why this is an emergency. So, this isn't a surprise to us tonight. This is appreciated that you explained it tonight, but we have previously heard that. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
See no other questions? So, please call the roll.
Ms. DuVall.
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Clepass.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes.
So, Your Honor, I do have an ordinance in first reading, adopting the amended civil service rules for the city of Kettering. It is requested by the Human Resource Department, and it is first reading.
Thank you. It is first reading, but may we have an explanation from staff? Mr. Greason, are you going to take this, or is Jenny?
I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith.
Okay.
And invite her to overview it.
Thank you, Mr. Greason. Your Honor, this is a request to adopt the amended civil service rules. The revisions to these rules are contained in the addendum. The Civil Service Commission has met and recommended the placement of the positions of planning and development technician, equipment mechanic one, equipment mechanic two, and lead equipment mechanic into the classified civil service. They've confirmed the placement of crime analyst and civilian dispatch supervisor into the unclassified civil service. Glad to answer any questions.
There any questions? Okay, this is in first reading, so thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next ordinance.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance in first reading also tonight to rezone 2025 through 2061 East Dorothy Lane from Economic Development Overlay District Number 4 to B, Business District Planning Commission Case Number PC 22-024. Request by Planning and Development Department, first reading.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our ordinances in first reading. Yeah, okay, yeah. Thank you. Do we have any staff comments on this one?
No, unless, Mr. Robelard, do you have any? No. We'd be glad to do a more detailed presentation at a future reading. If you, if you want information now, we'd be glad to provide it.
And we need anything right now? Okay, all right, thank you. Now, that concludes it. Certifications, petitions, Ms. Kaczynski, do we have any tonight?
Your Honor, we do not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We will move on to the manager's report and community update. Mr. Greason.
Yes. Pleased to report just some additional news about what's coming to the Phrase. Killer Queen on Thursday, July 6. George Thoroughgood, if you're in the Destroyers, if you're bad to the bone, on Saturday, July 15 at 8:00 p.m. Peppa Pig's Adventure on July 22. And not on this slide, but you may have seen in social media announced this weekend, Dustin Lynch on June 1 at 8:00 p.m. Tickets can be purchased to all events at the Phrase, at the Phrase Pavilion Ticket Office, our Fanfare Store, at Town and Country, and of course, by calling us at phrase.com or etix.com. We want to encourage Safety Village registration. This is for our children entering kindergarten in 2023, August 2023, and it's a great way for our children to learn about all aspects of safety, personal, fire safety, seatbelt, school bus, and even understanding things like traffic signs and signals. We'll have six sessions beginning in June, and you can contact the Engineering Department for more information. We talked earlier tonight about our Strategic Planning Committee and inviting people to be a part of that, and you appointed 30 residents to help lead that. Once again, we are seeking people to volunteer for our community. There's two volunteer opportunities that I'd like to talk about. The first is a, one position that we have open on Kettering's Planning Commission. You heard several You heard several presentations tonight about the hard work the Planning Commission does that shapes our community. The second one is the Board of Zoning Appeals. We're also seeking a new volunteer member for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Both of those applications can be sent to the Kettering Government Center, attention, city manager's office, mayor and council office at three-six-hundred Troy Road, or by email at ketteringmayorcouncil@ketteringoh.org. Our compost and mulch is available, starting the week of April tenth at Endurin Ripple Park at two-eight-zero-one East Stroke Road, and we appreciate the efforts of our team to make that available to our residents, though it's very popular. And I always hate ending with taxes, but I will. Your twenty-twenty-two City of Kettering income tax return is due April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. And most importantly, we want people to know that city staff is available to help you, our residents, in preparing your taxes. You can contact our Tax Division by phone or visit our North Building at the Government Center here at three-six-hundred Troy Road. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. And questions, or anything? At this point, if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak about anything other than legislation? Yeah, you've got to turn that speaker on. Please come to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council tonight? Come on down. Oh, it's so nice when someone actually answers that question. As usual, please give your name and address, and there is a five-minute limit. Thank you very much.
My name is Noah Cagle. Address is thirty-nineteen Lew Drive, Dayton, Ohio. I've been a resident of Kettering for, it'd be three years in May, and I finally wanted to attend one of these meetings and try to peek behind the curtain. I just want to say thank you all for, you know, being so transparent and giving citizens a chance to understand what's going on and participate. Didn't really understand a lot of what was going on in this meeting, but I'm sure as I grow more familiar, time will come. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Come back anytime. We love an audience. All right, we will now move to city council reports, and we'll start. Mrs. Fisher?
Yeah, Your Honor, well, I've had about nine events or meetings since our last council meeting, but the one thing I want to highlight is I became a grandma again. I have a grandson, Leo James, that was born last week, and so that was the highlight of my two weeks, I would say.
It's a Leo, huh?
Leo James. And I want to wish all of our residents a happy Easter, because we will not see each other until after Easter. It's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Your Honor. Last week, on the twenty-second, Doorwood Optimists had their annual tri-star basketball event. It's open to youth in the area, anywhere from grades three through middle school. And it must have been at least a hundred participants there, along with a couple hundred grandparents and parents supporting the youth. I wanted to thank, Bob Scott and I both worked the event, so Bob might say a few things, too. But I want to thank the mayor for being there and the vice mayor for the support that they gave to the event. And Jill Hall brought a participant again this year. So, we had a good turnout. It's always a great event at the Trent to show once again the great things that are happening in Kettering, and that's, that's always something that's good to bring folks into the city, too. Last night, Sister Cities had their monthly meeting. Lots of planning going on, especially during the month of June. June twenty-first is going to be SPASNOC, which is the annual fundraiser that helps support the youth trip and the youth exchange that we have with Stire Austria. Every other year, they come here, every other year, we go there. The kids are going there this year. That's a big part of the June activities. But also, there's an adult trip to Stire being planned and worked on, and I know we have a couple folks, the mayor and the vice mayor, will be going over to Austria at, once again, the end of June, first of July. And then, we also have the annual, our annual meeting of Sister Cities coming up next month, yeah. We're still in March, in April, so in a few weeks, it'll be held, and I know most council generally attends that. Last thing, I am going to start something new, and that will be the quote of the week. The quote of the week? Now, listen to this. You can't buy happiness, but you can buy local. And that's kind of the same thing. So, shop Kettering, that's all I have.
Whose quote is that?
Well, it's mine now. You got that one down, Mary? That's it. Thank you, Mary.
Bob?
Thanks, Mr. Kleipass, for upstaging me on the basketball event at the Doorwood Pub on a Trent. It was a first-class event, and I would just add one comment. It's from seven-to-twelve-year-olds, and there's a scoring system of the skills these young folks go through, and the highest-scoring attendee was a seven-year-old. So, the coach at Fairmont has already been alerted to this individual, and he's got his eye on him. That's all for me.
You notice the coach was over there stouting. He was there, yeah.
So, the only thing I would like to say tonight is, earlier tonight, we voted to appoint Leah White to the Board of Community Relations. She is a high school senior here in Kettering. She goes to Fairmont. And if I'm not mistaken, one of the members of our steering committee for Strategic Planning is also, she, under eighteen at the high school?
A junior.
A junior at Fairmont, thank you. I think it's amazing that we have youth who are paying attention, are engaged, and are willing to volunteer. I think that's outstanding, and I want to thank them both for their participation. It's so valued, and thank you.
Thank you. It is, my privilege, my favorite thing I get to do is meet with kids from schools about being mayor and sharing what it means to be involved with public service in your community. And I'm going to read you a few little notes that I got from the students after I met with Southdale. Sent four classes, or four groups of third graders over the other day, and they sort of took over council chambers. But before I read those to you, I just had one other item. It's not too soon to start talking about the mayor's party with a purpose. This is replacing the mayor's ball, because it's not quite a ball this year. We're kind of changing it up. We're going to have the Dueling Pianos, which if you've never heard them, are just a ton of fun. It's a national organization, and they send teams of piano players out to communities across the country. And I haven't heard of myself, but I've heard they're just really fun. So, mark your calendars for May thirteenth, for the mayor's party with a purpose at Reynolds and Reynolds, brought back post-COVID. So, we're going to have a great time. Put it down. Anyway, I'm going to conclude the meeting tonight with just a few notes from the minds of three-year, of third graders. This is precious. Dear Mayor Lehner, it was so fun to meet you. First, I learned that you are not just a mayor, but you actually go to volleyball games. Next, I like how you gave us pencils, and I'm actually using it right now. In addition, I loved seeing your office. That's why it was so fun to meet you. Sincerely, Naomi. Probably shouldn't give their names, but all right. Dear Mayor Lehner, that was cool when you showed us your office. It was more cool when you showed us the clerk. The clerk. That was super cool when you showed us the lobby. Thank you for the time and the visit. And then finally, dear Mrs., dear Mayor Lehner, I had fun learning about being a mayor. I learned that you are not in charge of the city council. I also learned that the city manager controls the city council. And I learned it can only be mayor, you can only be mayor for four years. Sincerely, Blaze.
Well, that's awesome.
With that, meeting is adjourned.
Next meeting.
Next meeting is April eleventh, twenty-twenty-three.
Are we allowed to leave, boss?